I'd like to call a Wednesday, January 14, 2015, meeting of the Southboro Community Board. First quarter business is Audience Sharon. Do you have anything to share? While it's being done, we'll move on to new business. First item is legislative update. Christine, do you want to kick us off here? We've got some action.
Yep, a couple things, yes. It's amazing to be actually finding your emails and finding a lot of information about what's going on in the legislative landscape. We've been talking a little bit about the Foundation Budget Review Commission hearings that have been going on for the last several months. And we're fortunate, I guess, that we'll be able to attend one fairly local. Neshoga Regional Vocational School is hosting one of the budget hearings on January 24th. And again, it is a task force designed and sanctioned by the Department of Ed to review the Chapter 7 and the funding formula. There's a lot of information that's coming forward and the Superintendent's Association is well represented at each of the open forums. And so I'm planning to attend on January 24th. If anyone wants to travel along. They will continue through, I believe their schedule right through May, before any findings are released. And again, as we've discussed, the general consensus is this seems to be the best effort put forth in some time to really look at making some corrections or adjustments with the Chapter 70 formula. So the final findings will be released, I'm sure, sometime after the last one. We'll look forward to seeing what the outcomes have been from the discussions. January 24th, Saturday.
Saturday.
From 11 to 1. Okay. The other piece of good news is we've been following some bills that have made their way through the legislature and then died. One was, I think, Bill H3722, and it was really supporting, exploring unfunded mandates and what that all added up to, and how can we sort of slow down these mandates as they come our way. And Carolyn Dejuma, certainly well-known to our region, has really put forth another act that she's hoping will move through the legislature. And I actually do have a copy of what the bill says. I can just read it. "Notwithstanding any general or special laws, to the contrary, the Decapital Elementary and Secondary Education is hereby authorized and directed to conduct an analysis of all new state laws, regulations, or administrative directives which directly impact Commonwealth public schools. Said analysis shall include but not be limited to a reporting of each new action across the school district and its employees' impact on time and learning in the classroom and overall, if we have done, improving student achievement. The department shall file its analyses with the Courts of the House of Representatives and the Senate prior to the implementation of related new state laws, regulations, or administrative directives." This is actually very consistent with the resolution that was passed by MASC at the November joint conference as well. So we'll be keeping an eye on that and certainly providing some support for Carolyn. Carolyn has been meeting with the Westboro Populton, Northboro Southboro Superintendent, quite regularly, and she's actually hosting coffees for us to get together with her on a regular basis to discuss some issues that we feel are really impacting our schools and our ability to do what we do, which is teaching and learning. And so if there are some suggestions, you know, from anyone in the community or from the school committee, we'd certainly take those forward to our meetings.
So there was originally a bill, which the bill sort of...
The bill died at the end of the last session.
Oh, it's not...
But this frankly is probably better.
It's an act versus a bill?
Well, the other thing would just establish a committee that would look at the whole issue. I've been going back and forth with Carolyn on this, on that bill, and see if she can push for it. She was wondering why the MASC wasn't really beaten down our door about it. So I talked to Don Kuchar, and he said, "Well, we don't really put a lot of stock into committees like that because nothing ever seems to come out." A bill like this filed, it seems to me, it'll probably be better. If it passes, it's definitive action that would happen every time they came up with some sort of mandates.
Oh, so this is sort of saying, if we say we need to administer this test as part of that, do an analysis.
Right.
There is one other change. We have a new governor, and it's no surprise to most of us. And Governor Baker is certainly making some appointments, and he has recently appointed James Peiser as Secretary of Education. Secretary Peiser replaces Secretary Malone, who was and has been a frequent visitor to the boroughs and traveled through Trotter Year and a few of our schools, the high school, last year when he was Secretary of Education. Secretary Peiser is a very familiar name in the world of education. He served as a fairly high-ranking official under four governors and helped to roll out charter schools, MCAS, and advocates for increased accountability. So both Governor Baker and Secretary Peiser have involved in the Pioneer Institute, which is really an educational innovation and proponent of both assessment and accountability. And in his role of Secretary, he will address all issues related from pre-K, kindergarten through post-secondary education. So we're all awaiting his first speech and his platform in terms of how he's going to move forward and work with superintendents and what his philosophy is around education. It's going to be interesting.
Discussion on legislative items. We'll move on to old business then, the cable studio update.
Old but exciting business. We've been talking at the committee for the last several months and addressing Sam's name, which is the Southboro Cable Access Media Television Studio. Terry is here and is a member of that very important community organization, and that they are seeking new facilities, a new home. They have approached schools, as we've discussed, and they've volunteered to serve on the sort of the study group, along with Cheryl Levesque and myself, and all the principals have been very active in the conversation. And so we've been looking at our schools and looking to identify possible spaces. We did tour our facilities last month and were able to provide for them some potential space. They are in the process of making some determinations about what spaces have been presenting them, what spaces have been presented to them, not only by the public schools, but some other organizations in the community as well. They are going to be reviewing proposals that will be sent to them over the next two weeks at their meeting on January 27th with the board. They hope to narrow down their selection, and we'll stay tuned to whether or not our schools are going to be considered for that. It's a wonderful, exciting opportunity for our students and for our, in our community to be able to be considered for this move. We have a very good history of merging, I guess, with the cable operations. We've had a very successful partnership with the Northboro Cable Studio at Calhoun Regional, and it's provided great learning opportunities for our students and a wonderful way to continue connecting with parents and the greater community. So more will be forthcoming in February. Maybe even at that point, they'll have narrowed down his selection, and we can talk a little bit more specifically about what that space might look like and how we might develop creating a similar partnership. So it's an exciting time for us. And I want to thank the principals for being very thoughtful as they looked at and considered what options might be in each of our buildings.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was in on all the discussions, and I think it's a great opportunity for both the town and the schools, I think. This is, the Southboro Cable is funded by all the people in town. You pay a fee, it's on automatically a federal law, it's on all your cable bills, and that goes to this Southboro. So I think merging the schools with this town organization is a nice community effort. But I think, so I think it helps the community to use, to bring the cost down and use our existing facilities, and in turn, it helps the schools because, you know, there is a lot of opportunity. We would never put a studio into our middle school level, but if it's there, we could never afford it. But if it's there, I think, you know, just, you know, even without going to academics, just clubs along, but I think then bringing that into the curriculum, also just being able with that equipment in the schools to broadcast activities that are at the schools, I think, will just be a real enhancement to the near, to both, especially if it's Trotter Year or, but the near Trotter Year campus. So I think it could be really neat. I think there's, it's a great opportunity and it's great for both the school kids and for the town.
We're looking forward to the discussions.
Moving on to the superintendent's report to the committee.
The FY 2015 financial report, the budget is in your package. There are no significant variances to report, so we will obtain a vote to accept until audited.
Can I get a motion for that back?
I'll make a motion to accept the December 31st, 2014 financial report until audited.
Seconded. All in favor? Ian Adams? Fiscal 16 budget priorities?
Fiscal 16.
They do drive our fiscal 16 budget calendar and calendar. Anything to talk about?
Well, we've added a meeting that just held this week. The operational budget subcommittee met on Monday, and we have additionally added two dates that are coming up. An opportunity for us to collaborate and partner with town on the budget processes we continue to do and always have. We've got a February 11th date. I believe these are confirmed, but anything's always something to change at this point, 11th, for a vote of our budget and then to be able to distribute, as we do, the Selective Advisory Committee and Town Administrator. On the 24th, we will be meeting with Southboro Advisory Committee.
And we'll do a public hearing, the one right before, or...
We are scheduled for a public hearing, April 8th.
Okay.
And in the meantime, you know, as we move through the budget cycle, as we always do and really enjoy doing, I'll be reaching out to various organizations in the community. I've spoken with PTOs and suggested that I'd be happy to visit with them when they're holding their PTO meetings as well, meet with parents to review the budget. Certainly will be holding a couple forms. Last year, we had one at Woodward, and we'll be setting those dates soon.
There you go. The fiscal 16 preliminary voting?
Twenty, and I'm going to stand for this budget presentation, and hopefully the clicker Appreciate it. So we do have the line item budget, the preliminary line item budget for FY 2016 to distribute after the presentation, as well as PowerPoint, photocops of PowerPoint. This evening, I'm very delighted and excited to be able to present the preliminary budget. Emphasis on preliminary. This is our first opportunity to present. That brightens up our schools. Our students brighten up our schools every day, but when you turn off the lights, it definitely puts a perspective on our doors.
Do we need a little bit more?
We need a little bit more. I think I can feel where the clicker button is, but thank you for that. So we've done a lot of actual work behind the scenes, meeting with the building principals and the directors at the central office to be able to move our budget discussions along and to present some preliminary numbers. Again, the emphasis is on preliminary. Several things can change between now and then. We've made our best estimates in terms of increases, contractual increases, utility increases, but as the next month or so unfolds, a lot of information will be coming along that may alter these numbers somewhat. And that's why, again, we will be presenting another budget next month because that information changes. So it's very much in a preliminary budget. And as Mr. Desmond noted, our budget priorities are really embedded in our statement of vision and mission. And we've spent a lot of time in our district really developing our strategic plan, and this actual vision and mission statement is sort of our framework for our budget discussions. It really is something that we refer back to when we're making difficult decisions about what items we're going to move forward in the FY 2016 budget. And there's some words that really resonated with me because it really does speak to how we do what we do in our district, which is very collaborative. One of the things that we're always looking for is opportunities for learning for our students and to continue to develop the excellence that we have in our schools. And as we look at opportunities and we look at the landscape moving forward, one such opportunity will be the discussions that we've had quite often when we talk about curriculum and the changing curriculum standards with the Next Generation Science Foundation release of its new standards within the next two years. We've had a lot of conversations about what that means for us moving forward and really an opportunity to be innovative from, you know, the K kindergarten level right up through the K8. And we're, this budget reflects some of those opportunities that we're moving forward into the 2016 budget, but we also realize in conversations with Principal Randall and Principal Valenti that one of the things that we really haven't budgeted for at this time, because it's a balance between being educationally innovative and fiscally responsible, is embracing those new standards and bringing in some exciting opportunities to expand our science programs at all of our grade levels and to do so in alignment with these next-generation standards. You know, we had a great conversation this morning, and both Principal Randall and Principal Valenti are really looking forward to the work that we have proposed in FY 2016 around these standards at the middle school level, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we progress through the preliminary budget. But those are things that we did not fund this year, that we're not proposing for 2016, but if, you know, if the landscape changes a little bit, I'm sure that those are things that we would really like to move forward with because they really do bring not only the standards together for science, but also the curriculum standards in terms of embedding science in English math, science, English math and social studies as well. And it will also then embrace 21st century learning standards of problem-solving and critical thinking. And of course, we can't talk necessarily about embedding these standards without talking about increased technology. So some of the things that we're looking forward to that may not be necessarily reflected in this budget, but certainly are coming soon, is really looking at our science K8 curriculum and really enriching those opportunities for learning for our students. The other foundation area in our vision and mission statement and certainly in our budget conversations is really engaging with the greater community. We have a long history of being very collaborative, not only as we build our budget internally, but also finalizing and working with the town to make sure that what we're doing is supported by the town and what we need is supported by the town as well. Part of our budget always refers to the supports that all of our students need because what we do in our district is provide a high quality of education for every student, and that does not necessarily mean the same supports in the same way for every student. And also, our, a big foundation area for us, and one of the cornerstones of our fighting strategic plan is communication. So how are we communicating and making sure that we communicate, again, around the budget and all that is teaching and learning in our district? Each and every school committee meeting, we review our budget priorities. If the vision and the mission statement is sort of our foundation, these priorities become our roadmap in our conversation to achieve our goals and to have the outcomes that we are looking for in terms of growth and improvement. So the first one that is very much embedded in our budget priorities is the items that we've identified in our strategic plan. Strategic plan is available for anyone to view on the website, and it was about a two-year process in the making with all of our community members and stakeholders present actively engaged in that. We are in the business, if you would say, by providing the best educational experience rate that we can for all of our students, and to do that, we place a very high priority on adequate staffing, as well as our class size, teacher ratios, which are articulated in the Southboro Community Policy I240, and continuing to seek and to hire the best qualified candidates at all grade levels. We also want to ensure that the funding is well-positioned to support and adopt the integration of 21st century skills into our teaching and learning expectations. This includes the professional development that's needed to develop those same skills in our teachers that we want to develop in our students. It includes the resources and the materials and certainly the staffing that are able to embrace and to demonstrate what those skills look like in a classroom setting. We invest, and we're very fortunate to have a wonderful facilities manager, a business director who oversees that, and very dedicated staff to ensure that our capital investments in the buildings and building systems are always improved and maintain the integrity of quality for a positive learning environment. Our budget process begins almost the first day we return from school. We certainly started spending from FY 2015, but we, our eye is on FY 2016. And it's good to review, I think, for folks who are not necessarily part of this process, putting together a preliminary budget or putting together a budget that will finally be appropriated at town meeting entails. So we start the conversations in September, and each and every year, we review our priorities because based on what we've done the previous year and we've been able to support and put in place, priorities may change. And that's an ongoing process, and that's something that the school committee takes up each and every meeting. We also then revise them for the school year if necessary, and we do this in collaboration with town boards as well as school, school committee. In October, we adopt those priorities, and then we begin to analyze and compute our budget figures that have been turned in from the building principals. So just as we're submitting our October 1 numbers for our student enrollment to find out how many youngsters are in our school to the Department of Ed, we're also asking for sort of preliminary budget figures for the next school year. And then in November, we prioritize and do a lot more of computing those numbers and preparing for our preliminary budget discussions. In December and January, because based on those discussions, we identify those items that may drive the budget up in the next fiscal year, and then we continue to present those drivers to school committee. We discuss the financial indicators that the town has presented to us. We do meet with the financial team at the town level, and we revise what our budget figures might be based on discussions. And we didn't meet on, we might have met December 10th, 2014, but we definitely, at that meeting, again, discussed our preliminary drivers, which help drive the budget that you will see this evening. And again, we're in constant revision and reviewing those numbers because information changes. In January this evening, we will present the preliminary budget for the first time, and we have identified for that preliminary budget the following budget drivers. Again, those items that collectively will realize an increase over our FY 2015 budget. Categorically, our first budget driver would be contractual obligations. And this is a sort of an overarching category that not only includes staffing, but it also includes any other contract that we might be involved in that we feel will be either increased or we know that it will increase because of the contract requirements. We have many contracts that are multi-year, some that are renewed each and every year. So that 623,778 reflects all of our contract negotiated items, not just staff. The Student Support Services is really an overarching category. It does include special ed, but it also includes English language learners. We had a wonderful presentation from Roro Webb, who's the director of our ELL program, and we know that just over three years in Southboro, our ELL population has increased by 30%. We also know that there are a lot of mandates that are related to delivering an ELL curriculum, and that includes the number of hours we spend with children with limited English proficiency, and certainly there's no shortage of recording. And what we've tried to do in Southboro over time is really to move to a full-time ELL teacher at each of our buildings. And so this reflects our continual goal to do that, and we're looking at adding some time for our ELL teachers, so that we can have someone full-time in each building to support those students. This year, the number may look high, but part of that number also reflects a decrease or a reduction in what we call circuit breaker. We calculate circuit breaker the year before we actually spend it. So we knew that this reduction would take place based on the amount of reimbursement we received through the circuit breaker process. This is something that takes a look at our special ed expenditures and based on certain gatekeepers, if you will, tuition, services provided for our special ed students, we are allowed to file for reimbursement based on those overall expenditures. Last year, our filings resulted in a decrease in our funding of $182,506. So that is reflected in the actual increase of $443,696. The central office staffing represents the Southboro portion of a central office position, and this number represents the Southboro portion of half of the position that we're hoping to add. It's quite a math calculation, but last year, we were able to put in our budget, and it was approved for half of a central office position. And we knew, and our intention was, to fund that other piece of that position this year. So that's the Southboro portion of a district staff member. There hasn't been an increase in central office staff since 1999, and there certainly have been a lot of increases in mandates and paperwork and filings and things like that. So that's what that represents. We also have some expenditures for centralized technology maintenance, and what that increase represents is an increase in our web hosting. We used to have an opportunity to have that cost reduced through E-rate reimbursements, and those have gone away. So the increase reflects headline-like costs. It's our web hosting. And also, some additional costs that have come through this year to make sure that our website is accessible to all, and that is a compliance issue, so that's the addition for the maintenance. And it really is sort of a centralized and central office cost. Utilities, building maintenance and grounds, I think anyone who is looking at their utility bill of late can also agree that there's perhaps some increases in their bills, and we realized the same increase, probably to a greater extent. We have, we have more than one home. We have several homes in Southboro where our children are our age and every day. And we saw in a previous slide that one of the things that we really treasure and value is keeping those capital assets up to a level of, a level of quality and welcoming feeling for our students, positive environment, and the schools really do set that tone when our students come in. So there's a slight increase in that, and that's an all-encompassing category for utilities, building, maintenance and grounds. So that's, those budget drivers total $1,045,263. But there are some offsets. We've had some reductions that we are proposing for the FY 2016 budget, and we do know that we've had some enrollment changes over time. And so those enrollment changes that may move from grade level to grade level also might be because of this change in student population as they progress through the grades and the services that they require. And so that is what we anticipate will be an offset based on those changes in enrollments and the needs of the students as they progress through the grades. We have a reduction of $20,000 in instructional materials, and this, again, is more of the specialized equipment area and resource area that we find is also offset because of those enrollments as they progress through the grades, mostly representative of the student population and the needs of that student, of the student population. We have a reduction in transportation for special ed students. We do incur costs to transport our students depending on where the service providers are located, and in this case, we had a change because of a student placement, and it's a reduction of $18,000. So those offsets total $315,558 when you put it all together. Last year's budget, 2015, $18,270, $18,270,64. Adding our budget drivers to that, that we've identified at this point in time with the preliminary budget, $19,450,000. preliminary budget, $19,415,327. We subtract out those offsets that we identified in the prior screen, and it went down to a preliminary FY 2016 budget of $19,099,769, representing a initial increase of $829,705, reflecting a 4.54 percent increase over FY 2015. In conversations with the town and town administrators and so forth, we do know that there have been conversations with other departments within the town suggesting that the most desirable increase over '15 for 2016 is somewhere between 3.75 and 3.9 percent. Again, preliminary, this is what, you know, we're targeting at this point. We do know that we have a month to continue our conversations, and that we will continue to be looking at each and every line item as we move forward with the budget process. Any questions?
No, I agree with Christine that, as I say, I think it's a date of the year. You know, we're trying to predict, you know, what 1,500 students will look like in a year when you start a new school year. So there's still variables that we have to look at. We don't know kindergarten registration, and we don't know who's retiring, and we don't know who's moving in and out of the district. I think Barbara's done a good job of trying to predict where our special education students end up, but that's always a moving target. So hopefully each month we'll let us refine that step.
It's a point of note that this is a preliminary budget. We're working on, we had a meeting the other night, and, you know, there'll be other budgets, subcommittee meetings to work on this.
Definitely, and we'll talk to the town. So we'll have meetings along the way. Good start. A lot of work, I know, to get to this presentation, so it makes it look easy, but we know that there's a lot of detail and a lot of hard work, starting at a very small level and rolling up, so we can appreciate that Christine is up here.
I think it's paying off too, though, because, I mean, for a first pass, you're pretty close to where the town is asking us to be. That's encouraging.
I was going to ask Christine, is the, we have a line item budget right now?
Right, this reflects the preliminary budget that you just said.
Yes, is this going to be put up on our website immediately?
I would suggest we can, but I don't think we generally put it up immediately. We can certainly do that.
Is there any reason we can't? Does anybody think, because I think the facets up there, I think that people will see that, the transparency, the numbers that they have to look at. I just want to, so I think that we consider that we'll put it up on the website.
But again, the big word preliminary.
Yeah, you're right. It's a preliminary budget.
With the big, with the dates on there, so whatever.
I love with the PowerPoint as well, with the keynote version of the line item budget. We certainly put that up tomorrow.
Very good, thank you.
Just to mention where in the, this will be the second year of a three-year contract.
Second year of three, if not just a couple.
It's always just good to mention where we're at.
Again, Christine, and those are the two enrollments.
Enrollments are in your packet, and Mary Beth did mention that kindergarten registration technically. At our next meeting, I believe we will have some pretty finalized numbers picked out, or at least as finalized as we can have in January, which will certainly also impact our preliminary budget conversation. So that's another reason that, you know, we're emphasizing preliminary because that's sort of one piece of information we're very much anticipating and looking forward to happen. So next month, we'll also be looking at our anticipated FY 16 enrollment projections as well in the packet, so.
I just want to add, Christine, the kindergarten registration is January 21st and 22nd. And if there are any families out there who have not contacted the school or who have not received information about kindergarten registration, please call the school office. We've received quite a few calls over the last few days.
Very similar. Right. So you send it out based on last year's census?
We do.
And then?
Yeah, and then we post it in several places. And this one was.
Right, but anybody, right, through the preschools, but if anybody's moved in, they don't know that. That will continue to be a moving target between now and next September, I'm sure.
It will be a larger class than we anticipated.
Yeah, well, that's what happened this year.
It wasn't this year too.
It was this year, it just kept growing. There's a lot of moving happening.
Educational policy, none at this time, is that correct?
We have policies.
We have plenty of policies.
We do. Policy committee is very busy. We met again today, so we'll want to assure everyone we'll have policies begin next month. So, second part of the agenda.
That's first.
All of the policies in the packet this evening are back for second readings. We have the conduct of school committee meetings being T-20. And I believe we had little or no edits from our first reading this month. So it's here for consideration.
You want to accept, take one by one?
Yes. There's a couple of changes with each of them, so taking them one by one might clarify what we need to say tonight. Actually, we'll get to policy B-27, but it's just one side.
Anybody want to make a motion on B-20?
I'd make a motion to accept conduct of school committee meetings, policy B-20, as revised, I think, just as this is a revision, right? As currently revised.
Sounds good. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Policy on handling complaints. Again, here for a second reading. Notes, edits from last, from the first reading. And if we approve policy B-27 this evening, we recommend that we rescind policy C-100, function of superintendent in handling complaints.
Anybody ready for a motion on B-27?
Now, do we have to have a separate motion for the rescinding? Or do we, how do we do this?
We can take them all under one.
Oh, under one motion.
How about, I recommend we, death policy on handling complaints, B-270 as revised, and we rescind policy function of superintendent in handling complaints, C-100.
Sounds good. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
We have policy B-310, orienting new board members. Really have all this stuff?
I also have a new board member.
Yeah, we just had one minor change on that on the second page.
Right, right.
I like that it says consisting minimal.
What else is there?
It's a growing list.
I know.
Nothing minimal about this.
No, for sure.
Question on the last bullet. Do you remember the first of them, the MASC on board seminars? The, when I went through it, it was called charting the course.
Charting the course.
Yeah, I think it's called charting the course.
And I are too required.
You're required to have training. I think MASC provides it at a, because we're members, but I would just say, take out the on board, because I think they changed the name of it.
Changed it, too.
Yeah, and just say to attend the MASC seminars for new members.
Okay, I'm on my roll. I recommend we accept policy orienting new board members, B-310, as revised.
Now, did we want to add caffeine suggestion too?
That's the right side.
I saw this as being revised too. Okay, I'll second.
Do I have to revise the revised?
Revised, revised.
The newly revised. Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Policy B-320, subcommittees. And you remember having a lot of conversations about this, this subcommittee, policy subcommittee.
No, I think that's a good change. I think it's, actually, I think it's sort of. Yep, I think it sums it up well. I would like to make a motion to be accept policy, subcommittees B-20 as revised. B-320, I'm sorry, that was reversed.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
When I had a question.
Define question.
What, define a question? I think we might have, can put two policies together at some point. So it talks about the selection process of a screening committee, and it doesn't sort of say that that's only for principals and administrative director level. So I think we need to sort of say, so we don't do that. Because up above, it talks about administration, instruction and non-instruction positions, and then it talks about screening committees. So we need to say that we don't do that to higher education.
We actually just talked about this policy in subcommittee earlier, because there are a number of policies that we have that are currently going through the review cycle. And there are some groups that have a special policy unto themselves. So there's a separate policy for defined groups of staff members. And so we may want to hold this and bring all of those forward so that it's included in one policy, and then we can rescind all the other ones. Because we do want this evening, and there's probably a couple more in there, so we can hold this. We can make that change, and then rescind a few more. Opening exercises, I-150. We did have a change. There is a premises around implicate, and it doesn't really need to be, so our recommendation is that be removed. And when the policy is approved, the premises will not be part of the approval. There was also a question that came up at the last meeting with respect to the moment of silence and whether or not that was actually part of the policy. So I do have the actual statute, and the moment of silence does say silence shall be maintained and no activities engaged. So the moment of silence is part of that. And that's embedded in our examples of activities. So I would suggest that we make sure that that's part of the change as well in the language. So it's read out in the statute. And I don't believe that we necessarily cite that there should be a period of silence, maintain no activities. So my recommendations would take exactly the language from the statute and include this in the policy. So should we hold it? We can hold it, or I can actually review with you the language and we can include it based on the proposed change. So where it does say, shall leave a class group for cessation of cludal legion to the flat, I would also add that. And in each such class is held, shall announce that a period of silence not to exceed one minute in duration shall be observed for personal thoughts, and during any such period of silence shall be maintained and no activities engaged. We can simply say, in a moment of silence, we'll follow, and then reference MasGen law.
Well, you already have, in accordance with MGL chapter 71.
I did not realize either of those were a law. I didn't know until I had to do it, so I became very familiar with it.
I would like to make a motion if we accept policy opening exercises, I-150, as revised.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any else? Thank you, Policy Subcommittee. Bring us the personnel items.
Personnel report, I believe, is in the packet. Being close in fact, it is a copy of the letter that was discussed at our last combined meeting, and a vote was taken to appoint MASC as one of our representatives for the purpose of selecting the administrator, and that's a copy of the letter that was sent out in behalf of the U.S.
And action on minutes, maybe two, three minutes for the last one, maybe?
I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the Southborough School Committee open meeting of Wednesday, December 10th, 2014.
I'll second. Any discussion? I had no changes or changes. All in favor?
I'd like to thank Mary Beth, and it's easy to keep the most straight.
Those and payrolls, I'm sure, will be taken. We have finished with school and group at the end of the week.
We submitted what the school would have.
That brings us to audience sharing once again. All right, I guess I'll have to pay a motion to adjourn.
Mary Beth, we have a source for you, Mark.